Seagres, can you please take roll call?
Borninski.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Looks like that the record reflect trustee Ganguly is not in attendance. Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Krista's in attendance. Slavens?
Good evening.
Snyderman?
I'm here.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the add-on of item G eight? Consider our request to approve letter of agreement between Canton Township and the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees ASME Local 3860.
So moved.
Support.
Made by clerk Seager, supported by treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Agenda approved. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for June 6th and 13th, 2023?
A moved.
Support.
Made by clerk Seager, supported by trustee Borninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Minutes approved. Okay, we're going to open up with public comment on agenda items only. Three minutes. Any public comment on agenda items only. I'll start online. Oh, yes, you're right. Before we do that, let's everybody stand up and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I don't see any hands online for public comment. No public comment online. Any public comment for the agenda items only in the House? Anyone for agenda items only? All right. Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by treasurer Slavens, supported by trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, we have an oath of office to take here for one of our committees. Watua Diane Slavens, treasurer. If you would please stand up and clerk Seager will give you the oath of office. Sure. Just pull this really quick. This is the 20th. All right, next we're going to do a recognition. Proclamation presentation to Laura Mortier, Canton Leisure Services Recreation Supervisor and recipient of the 2023 Robert W. Crawford Young Professional Award from the National Recreation and Park Association. John and Greg, if you want to come to the front also with Laura while we read it. I will read, I will, um, yeah, I'll give it to you guys.
Don't everyone jump in at once. We all just want to do it. All right, so recognition of Canton Leisure Services prestigious National Recreation and Parks Association 2023 Young Professional Award winner Laura Mortier. Whereas Canton Leisure Services is proud to announce that Laura Mortier has been named the recipient of the 2023 Robert W. Crawford Young Professional Award from the National Recreation and Park Association. And whereas this award recognizes the vision and dedication of individuals who have tirelessly worked to improve the quality of life in America through parks and recreation and honors those who will serve as an example of future leader in continuing the recreation and park movement into the 20th century. And whereas Mortier has worked for Canton Leisure Services since the age of 17, starting out as a junior day camp counselor and has advanced to the top leadership position of recreation supervisor overseeing the operations and programming of the Block Youth and Teen Center, therapy recreation programming, enrichment classes, summer day camps, and special events. And whereas she has previously been honored for contributions to the parks and recreation industry in the state of Michigan, receiving the Michigan Parks and Recreation New Professional Award for exhibiting outstanding service and dedication to Canton Leisure Services as well as the M-Parks organization. And whereas Mortier has been involved in serving on several M-Parks committees, contributing to the advancement of M-Parks initiative for growing diversity in youth development, as well as serving on many township and local committees such as Canton Cares Fund, the Commission for Cultural Arts and Heritage, and as a local charter school board member, as well as a member of the Peace and Justice Committee for a local church, in addition to being a member of a local women's charity called Chicks for Charity. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby congratulate Laura Mortier on winning the prestigious National Recreation and Parks Association 2023 Young Professional Award. She is to be commended for her hard work and dedication to Canton Township and the Canton community.
Yeah, you're fine. Congratulations. Poor Laura, she's trying to get back.
Go ahead and stand. Do you have it, John? They're like, oh, we had written our pictures.
There you go.
Okay, there she goes. You can see her now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Laura. Good job, Laura. We're very proud of you.
Madam Supervisor, I move that we read the proclamation into the minutes of the meeting for all eternity.
Support.
Motion made by clerk Seager is supported by treasurer Slavens and trustee Borninski.
Foster.
Foster.
And trustee Foster and trustee Snyderman.
We all did it.
Thank you. The next item we, okay, can I have a vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. The next item we have is a recognition. Resolution recognizing retired police officer Joseph Vogt. Whereas the Canton Police Department recognizes the importance of its employees. Whereas in 2002, Joseph Vogt was hired as a police officer for the Canton Police Department. Whereas Joseph worked in the road patrol division simultaneously serving on numerous special units, including evidence technician, field training officer, detective bureau explorer advisor, special enforcement unit, awards committee, department recruiter, and a community engagement team. Whereas while always serving with demonstrated skill and professionalism, Joseph made his mark in the department with his innate ability and passion for those units that connected him to the community. Whereas Joseph enjoyed meeting and talking with those he came in contact with, always making a positive impact during the interaction. Whereas Joseph's department file contains numerous letters from individuals he serves in various capacities, all complimenting him for displaying the utmost courtesy and respect during their time of crisis. Whereas Joseph served Canton Township with knowledge, pride, and a positive attitude, providing a unique approach and perspective to policing that will be remembered by his coworkers and the community members alike. Resolve the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton is appreciative of the commitment to excellent service as demonstrated by Officer Joseph Vogt. Further resolve, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby recognize Joseph Vogt for his commendable contribution to the Canton community and to the Canton Police Department.
Support.
Motion supported by trustee, I'm sorry, by clerk Seagres. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. So Mr. Vogt, will you please come up to the front? We're going to take a bunch of pictures of you now with your friends. Yeah, because you have so many fans here. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Joe, Deputy Supervisor, come on up. Come on up. You have to stand in the back of the room for this one.
Stand in the middle?
Do we have everyone? Did you get everyone or you want us to squish?
Double up? Overlap.
You guys can come up here. Okay, there you go. There you go.
Someone has stepped back here too, they can.
Thank you, John.
Congratulations.
Any comments from board members? Thank you.
Madam Supervisor, I'll just take a brief liberty. Officer Vogt, probably two years into Officer Vogt's time here at Canton Township. I was 20 years old and I was struggling with a drinking problem. And I had been involved in a pretty bad accident with an automobile. And I was in front of Officer Vogt, two years here with the force, and didn't know where my life was going to go. Had no idea what I was doing, making every wrong choice I could possibly make at that time. And I don't remember exactly what Officer Vogt said to me in that moment. I don't even know if he remembers this. I've never brought it up to him personally. But whatever he said to me in that moment helped me completely change my life around. And I was able to get help. And I would not be alive today, and I would not be in this chair today without him. And so I am eternally grateful for him and people who wear the badge and who do that service and help save people's lives. So thank you and enjoy your retirement, sir.
Any other board comments? I don't know how we can take that, type that one, clerk Seager. I don't think we can. All right, we do. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, officer. And you, anybody is welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Wait, where are you going? All right, thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C one, consider increasing two blanket purchase orders for municipal services. And C two, consideration of a second reading of an ordinance amending chapter 50, Article One, Section 50-3, Open Space and Nature Area Preservation, and Article Two, Section 531, definitions, parks, and recreation of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Support.
Motion made by clerk Seager, supported by trustee Borninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G one, consider approval of the First Amendment to the Fillmore Place Plan Development District. G one, I'm sorry, G one.
When's the add-on?
Uh, the add-on is G eight.
I see that now. Sorry. Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the attached, or the following resolution, the approval of Planned Development District Amendment Number One for Fillmore Place. Whereas project sponsor has requested approval of amendment number one to the Planned Development District for Fillmore Place Planning Applic- on the subject planning application located on the west side of Beck Road between Geddes Road and Michigan Avenue. And whereas Planning Commission reviewed the amended Plan Development Plan and Plan Development Agreement, voted eight to zero to recommend approval of the request with conditions as it meets the criteria for a planned development and complies with the applicable site design requirements of the zoning ordinance except where modifications are approved. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve amendment number one of the Fillmore Place Plan Development District and plan changes in the subject application on the subject tax parcel as provided in the Plan Development Agreement Amendment and Plan Developments subject to making the setback table on the plans consistent with the setback distances noted on the plans and indicating the setback modifications table in an exhibit to the PDD amendment.
Motion made by clerk Seager, supported by treasurer Slavens. In 2020, the Fillmore Place Plan Development District, PDD, and site plan were approved, which is a development of 504 apartment units on the approximately 97.3 acres located on the west side of Beck Road between Michigan Avenue and Geddes Road. Since the PDD and site plan were approved, the applicant has obtained the necessary permits to commence construction and several buildings have been finished so far. When the Fillmore Place PDD was approved, the site consisted of one parcel. At this time, the applicant proposes to split the site into three parcels for financing purposes only. The three proposed parcels will continue to function as a cohesive development, and there are no changes to the other number of units, buildings, structures, access, landscaping, lighting, parking, or any other development related aspect. At its meeting on June 5th, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the PD amendment. If the PD amendment is approved, the applicant will coordinate revisions with the Municipal Services Department. Deputy Dave, would you like to comment on anything?
Madam Supervisor, I don't have any further comments, but I'm ready to answer questions. Also, Patrick Sloan, committee planner, is present here to answer any questions too.
Patrick, do you want to add anything?
Thank you. The only item that I want to add is that the proposed land division that's on the plan is to split the development into three parcels, and it's for financing purposes only. So portions of the development can be financed separate from other ones. But the Plan Development Agreement originally makes it one cohesive development, and it will remain one cohesive development, just in three separate large parcels. So the reason for this amendment is those interior parcel lines that are proposed create setback distances. And those setback distances require modifications, which is the reason for this amendment. So it's probably overly technical, so I'll just leave it at that, but I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thanks. Trustee Foster, do you want to add anything for the meeting?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Board questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item G two, consider approval of a 2024 purchase of three utility vehicles for Pheasant Run Golf Course.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of three beverage carts for Pheasant Run Golf Club from Deer and Company, 2000 John Deer Run in Cary, North Carolina, 27513, for a total amount of $36,302.58 to be paid from the subject account number for goods on order. A 2023 PO will be entered, but will not be expensed until 2024.
Support.
Motion made by clerk Seager, supported by trustee Snyderman. Canton Leisure Services is requesting approval of the purchase three utility vehicles for Pheasant Run Golf Club for a total cost of $36,302.58. Purchase order will be entered into 2023 and expensed in 2024. And these are used throughout the golf season to carry beverages, snacks around the course, offering to sell products to the golfers. They're also used for various duties on or around the clubhouse course. Since COVID-19, the game of golf has grown significantly among the residents. Due to the increase in play, golf vehicles are getting used more than they were in the past, causing excessive wear and tear on the equipment. Pheasant Run current beverage golf carts are eight years old and well past their expected mileage. Director Hoenberger, do you have anything to add?
No, it's pretty straightforward. We're going to order these this year to be received and in service for the 2024 golf season.
Questions or comments from the board? All in favor of the motion? Kate?
So I just wanted to thank Director Hoenberger for answering some questions I had this afternoon. And just so that everybody else is aware, do you mind telling us again, or telling me again, about how much the township makes on the food and beverage purchases?
Certainly. Certainly. Food and beverage services for 2022, which we are on track to exceed these numbers for 2023. Total revenue for food and beverage was $455,000, with total expenses for wages and costs of goods sold at $284,000 for a net positive of $170,000.
Thank you.
You want to talk about how much we've increased golf this year? I know you showed me some of the stats. I don't know if you have them with you.
Yeah, I don't have those in front of me right now, but our numbers are, since COVID really, our numbers continue to increase. And we're seeing record numbers of golfers every year, and we've been able to maintain an increase on those numbers every year. So staff is doing a fantastic job of retaining the clientele that have entered into the world of golf since COVID.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G three, consider authorization of a purchase order for irrigation computer replacement at Fellow's Creek Golf Course.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order for Spartan Distributors at 1050 North Updike Road, Auburn Hills, Michigan, at 48326, in the total amount of $21,780.65 for the purchase of an irrigation computer replacement to be paid by account number 58477278.9700010. I move to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by clerk Seager, supported by trustee Snyderman. The current computer which operates the irrigation system at Fellow's Creek Golf Club was last installed in 2010. Due to the age of the system, the hardware and software are severely outdated, causing a significant decrease of the efficiency of watering cycles throughout the course. Canton Leisure Services requesting authorization to submit a purchase order for an irrigation computer replacement at Fellow's Creek Golf Club for a total amount of $21,780.65. Due to the age of the current computer, the course has experienced several issues. The PO will be entered now with plans to make the purchase in the fall, however, allowing flexibility for an earlier replacement if necessary. Budget amendment is necessary. Any questions? Do you want to add anything, Greg?
As you know, any technology that we had in place in 2010 is severely dated by 2023. So it's long overdue to be replaced. Plan is to do it in the fall, as the supervisor mentioned, but we wanted to get this PO entered now so that should the current system become inoperable, we're able to make that repair without coming to the board for an emergency purchase order.
Thank you, Kate.
Yeah, does this include any training that might be necessary?
Yes.
Thank you.
You read both motions, right? Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G four, consider approval for the creation of two full-time park labor positions for the Leisure Services Department.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the creation of two full-time park labor positions for the Parks Division in the Leisure Services Department, and approve the letter of agreement between the Township of Canton and the ASME Union, and to approve the attached 2023 budget amendment.
Support.
Made by clerk Seager, supported by trustee Borninski. Due to the many new park developments and increased park usage, Human Resources and the Leisure Services Director worked with the ASME Union on signing a letter of agreement to add two new park labor positions to the Leisure Services Parks Division. These additional positions will increase coverage in the evenings and weekends to fill gaps in service. After factoring in wages and benefits, Leisure Services is recommending creating two full-time park labor positions totaling $85,321 annually per employee, including fringe benefits. Since these positions will not be filled until August 2023, at the earliest, a 2023 budget amendment of $63,302 will be necessary. Director Hoenberger, do you have anything to add?
Just that I'm very excited that we're finally at this position to be adding these positions. I appreciate all of your consideration. Wendy's help in, and her department's help in the finance piece of all this. And Rochelle and Amanda in Human Resources, working with the union and the union being flexible on creating a non-standardized schedule, which helps to better meet the needs of the community.
Questions or comments? Kate?
Sorry. Just, I saw, you know, obviously we're making a budget amendment for this, but just wondering how it's fitting into the 2024 budget?
There will be, that'll be when we approve the 2024 budget later this fall, the increase will be included in there as well.
All right, thank you.
Alice? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G five, consider approval to purchase utility vehicles for Canton Community Productions.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of one utility vehicle, carryall 502 from Midwest Golf and Turf at 2111 Hagerty Road, Commerce Township, Michigan, 48390, for a total amount of $12,057.31 to be paid from the subject account number for capital outlay.
Motion made by clerk Seager, supported by treasurer Slavens. On March 9th, 2023, Leisure Services Park staff advertising invitation to bid for four park utility vehicles, carryall 502. As a result, four companies submitted a proposal with Midwest Golf and Turf proposing the lowest cost of $12,057.31 per vehicle, which includes the required specs and necessary safety feature add-ons. If approved, the Canton Community Production staff will be able to add one additional carryall to the park's order for the same bid price of $12,057.31. Director Lefever, do you want to add anything?
Just that this is something we've been looking forward to, to potentially adding for our cable staff. As you've all seen, they come to many of our events throughout the community and throughout the year. And this will help them do their, the job that they already do very well, even better. So happy to take any questions.
Questions? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G six, consider authorizing a purchase order for the master plan, cost estimate, and grant application for the Morton Taylor Trailhead.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award the purchase order for MCSA Group Incorporated at 529 Greenwood Avenue Southeast in East Grand Rapids, Michigan, at 49506, in the total amount of $15,000 to be paid from the subject account number for professional and contractual services.
Support.
Motion made by clerk Seager, supported by trustee Borninski. In partnership, the Canton Leisure Services and Municipal Services Department are preparing to apply for the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. are preparing to apply for the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Trails Maintenance Fund through the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan. This grant is to provide maintenance support to already-developed trails and greenways and is available to organizations working to solve extraordinary circumstances where a component of a trail or greenway requires some form of restoration or intervention to ensure it continues to function effectively, providing users with a recreation experience and community connectivity that was envisioned when the trail was developed. The foundation just announced a $10 million endowment ranging from $50,000 to $400,000 and will be determined by a review committee made of community leaders from throughout the region. It is intended to apply for a $400,000 grant and to provide a $400,000 match for a total project budget of $800,000. Canton Leisure Services is requesting approval of a purchase order to MCSA Group in the amount of $15,000 for the master plan, cost estimate, and grant application assistance for the Morton Taylor Trailhead. Director Lefever, do you want to add anything?
Just that this will give us a great opportunity for not just this funding opportunity, but future as well. And it's always good to have a project-ready plan in hand. So we look forward to further developing our trailhead and timing it with some development that's going on in that area. So we're very excited about this opportunity.
Thank you. I should actually read this last one, too. Ordered improvements will include a prefabricated restroom building with one unisex universally accessible stall, drinking fountain, including a dog bowl, bike repair station, bike wash station, and picnic shelter. Any questions from the board?
Is there electricity at that location, or it won't be something that needs that?
There currently is not. There is some development that's going to be bringing some major utilities right up to the trailhead. So we're hoping to take advantage of that opportunity through that. So there potentially would be with the, you know, added development.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G7, consider waiving the bidding process and approve the purchase and training of one German Shepherd and an associated amendment to the 2023 police budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase and training of one German Shepherd in the amount of $13,600 from K-9 Academy Training Facilities and to approve the attached listed amendment to the 2023 police budget for this expense.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Police Department is requesting to purchase one German Shepherd for its K-9 unit, replacing K-9 Regner, who is expected to retire with his handler this winter. The department is also requesting to waive the bidding process due to the uniqueness of police K-9 and their training methods and utilize K-9 Academy Training Facility at a proposed amount of $13,600. This includes the purchase supplies and one-year training for the K-9 and its handler. An amendment to the 2023 police budget is also being requested to use forfeiture funds for this purchase. The Police Department has conducted numerous studies on K-9 training philosophies of working dogs over the years, and has continually chosen to stay with the K-9 Academy Training Facility for their ability to match handlers and officers with green German Shepherds and focus on training on obedient and control-oriented techniques. The process of selecting a replacement K-9 is unlike purchasing any other piece of equipment. Based on department experience, past K-9 officer input and trainers, the consensus is to maintain training philosophies that fit with Canton's policies, practices, and procedures, placing emphasis on obedience, tracking and scent work, and less on aggression and bite work. Working with one facility also provides for continuity of handler/K-9 training methods for interoperability within the department. So thank you very much. And Mr. Bailey, do you want to add anything?
No, I did not, but I'm open for any questions.
Okay, thank you. The board have any questions? Kate? I'm sorry.
Can you explain what a green German Shepherd is? Is it just a new one, or not trained yet, or what?
It's an untrained one, yeah. I know they come from overseas. And then there's an inboarding, onboarding process that they have to see if the animal can even become a canine for the Police Department.
Okay. And if everything works out, after the dog is trained, will you please bring him to our board meeting?
The customary tour of the township facilities.
We like it when they come visit. We're going to miss Regner, so...
Yes, we will miss Regner.
Maybe Regner can come say goodbye?
You do a resolution, like for Joe?
Yes. His handler, Officer Solstak, is retiring also.
Oh, that's right, him too. They're both retired, so they retire together.
I didn't know that.
Yes.
Yeah, it's so fun.
It happened before, and we did a resolution for it.
Yep, and we'll do a clap out and everything.
Is Regner going to stay with Officer Solstak, or?
Yeah, the bond that they develop between the handler and the canine, it's hard to give it to another person. And then Regner is getting a little bit older in age, so it wouldn't have as much service to us with a new handler. It'll, to give you a perspective, it'll be, I'm hoping for March of next year, by the time the canine is fully serviceable for us, that's how much of a bond it develops with its trainer.
Great job at Liberty Fest.
Yes.
My two-year-old was pulling on his ears, and he was really calm. That's a boy.
Anyone else? Well, Miss Regner, Regner has, if anyone doesn't know, there's cards. It's like baseball cards. So there's a picture of Regner, and on the back, there's stats on Regner. So we'll see the same with the new puppy also. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item G8, which is the add-on, consider request to approve letter of agreement between Canton Township and the AFSMI Municipal Employees Local 3860.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the letter of agreement, or LOA in the biz, between Canton Township and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI Local 3860, to allow fatigue time in extreme work situations subject to the LOA's final approval by legal counsel. If approved, this shall be retroactive to May 23rd of 2023.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Canton Township has had discussions with AFSMI regarding fatigue time amid work situations where township employees are asked to work for at least 16 consecutive hours with no time off. The township is concerned about the safety and care of employees during these extreme work situations, as well as the quality of the work being performed. The township and the union would like to enter into a fatigue time letter of agreement to provide rest time to employees in the AFSMI bargaining unit in extreme work situations. The LOA would provide that employees who are called in or scheduled to work at least 16 consecutive hours be relieved and paid for fatigue time with no loss of paid time off, subject to the approval of the department director or their designee. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything?
Just that we were approached by Bill Wagner, who's the president of the local AFSMI Union here in Canton, a couple of months ago to start discussions about fatigue time. He had concerns because there were bargaining unit members who were working on a water main break for 20 to 30 hours straight. And some worked without a break during that time. And others had a break, but they were forced to use their PTO or their paid time off during their break before being called back to work. And Bill pointed out that these fatigue time agreements are not uncommon in other communities. And he pointed some provisions in other communities out to myself and Rochelle Howell, our Human Resources Manager. And so we had some discussions with him and the bargaining unit, and are proposing this agreement.
Questions or comments?
I'm glad that they did approach you with this issue because, you know, safety should be first. And I know when they're working 20 hours, things happen. So I'm really happy that they...
Yes, they come in, I think one of the water main breaks, they, I mean, they worked on long hours, and they had to come back and go back out, and it's a long day. Dangerous work, too, in the winter. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, now we are at the public comment section. Let me look online. Public comment for three minutes. Any public comment online, not going once, twice, three times, no public comment online. Any public comment in the room? Can you please go to the podium, state your name?
George Miller. There was some issues the other day. They come up, Nowland subdivision. I'd like to know if it ever got cleared up. The streets were flooded over there. Do you know anything about that? Did the DPW Public Works take care of it? You don't know?
Then your public comment.
I'd like an answer to it.
You'd have to check tomorrow, George, when we ask the staff.
Okay. Secondly, we had a breakdown of a commercial vehicle in front of the Police Department here on Canton Center Road. I'd like to know, I was out and about town, and there was another wreck in between Sheldon and Canton Center Road on Palmer. Those vehicles were towed within a half hour, more or less. That commercial vehicle was five or five and a half hours, and it couldn't get off on the shoulder. There was no shoulder there. I'd like to know, and let's clear this up, on a double standard. Evidently, I want to know if I can leave my car, if it breaks down on Ford Road or Canton Center Road, I can leave it out there till I get a mechanic five hours later. They did for those people. Secondly, and I, we've been, thanks for cleaning the street on Lily Road. It took two years at Ford Road and Lily Road approximately. Then I'd like to know if you can get the guardrail put back up on Palmer Road and Sheldon Road intersection, or just north. There must be 100 foot of it. It's laying down on a 45-degree angle. It doesn't do any good when it's in the ditch. Now, a couple more other things. The other day, the DPW evidently was cleaning out a ditch, some. They couldn't find a fireplug. That's the ditches I complained about being cleaned for the last four or five years. So you guys couldn't find the fireplug, and somebody's house is burning down, so you had to go out there and get all the brusher out from it. If that would have been clean, maybe you wouldn't have had that problem. Like we've been asking for about five years, I have. One other thing, I'd like to know, last meeting over at the summit, there was a public person over there dealing on election problems. I'd like to know why they got five minutes. Right off the bat, they got five minutes on speaking. So I would appreciate that if we're given the grace like everybody else. Evidently, there's a favoritism or a double standard, possibly.
Any other comments in the room? Nope. Okay, great. All right. Any staff comments? Nope. Anything happening this weekend? Go ahead, John.
Always lots of things happening. So July is not only National Recreation Month, but it's always Recreation Month here in Canton. But a number of series happening. The farmer's market continues. Been very well attended, so I encourage everyone to check that out. Also out at the Village Arts Factory, we'll have the Concerts in Cars series starting this month in July. We have our Pride Outside event happening on July 8th. And then later this month, actually starting on a couple nights, we have our Thursday night concert series that will run until mid-August. So eight weeks of Thursday night concerts. So we hope to see everybody out there.
That's opening?
Yeah, splash pad is at a soft opening. We're having an official ribbon cutting next Thursday, July 6th. But we, like I said, we have a soft opening. It's running now. And we've added some great shade sales, and people are very excited about it. So it's a great ad for the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other staff comments? All right, we'll move on to board comments. We'll start with Summer.
The air quality outside is terrible, so everyone, please be careful.
Nothing really going on in the clerk's office. Question was asked why somebody during a hearing had five minutes, because during a hearing, the, a hearing typically is structured in an individual who is appealing something gets allocated five minutes. And then the township is allocated some time. And then what's cool about a hearing is it actually defers and gives a little bit of an extra benefit to the aggrieved party because they are given a second bite at the apple, and they get another five minutes for a total of 10 minutes. That is how we do appeals hearings for denials of solicitors licenses, ice cream truck licenses, so on and so forth. And then the same process that we applied for FOIA, deny, appeal as well. So that is not a public comment. That is an appeals hearing. Just thought I'd, that's the only thing I know about that. I just put that out there.
Trustee Berninski?
Want to wish everyone a safe and happy Fourth of July because we won't be here next week, so doing it a little early.
Snyderman?
Same here. Happy birthday to the United States of America, and have an enjoyable, long weekend, everybody.
Treasurer Slavens?
Yeah, ditto. Happy Fourth of July. Hopefully, everybody has a safe Fourth of July. And I am so thankful, as we all are, for the rain with everything so dry. I know people have been holding off on having little campfires. And now that the yards are getting a little water, hopefully, we won't have any issues with fireworks. So I am excited for the rain. Another reminder is we are mailing property taxes out July 1st. So you'll be receiving those in the mail. They're due September 14th. So if by the second week of July you don't receive your property tax bill, feel free to call our office, or you can go online and look at your bill that way. Thank you.
I know this is the first time we've met since Liberty Fest, so I know that everybody had a good time, and I believe we broke record numbers again. Skurbeck said they broke records on Saturday. Yes, that was really good, a very safe event, very happy event, everybody. I had people that would say to me things like, "Thank you for all the public safety I see around here. I feel safe with my kids. I know there were no incidents that caused anything, so great job, everyone." I know the community is really proud of all of our staff and volunteers that did this and were there and attended. It was a good time. A lot of fun was had. I don't think we have the numbers yet in terms of the records, but I know we broke last year's record, so it was a good time. Great job. So happy Fourth of July, everybody, and stay safe. And as Trustee Foster said, you know, there is an air quality issue out there, and I believe we've had to close some outdoor classes down tomorrow. Is that correct because of it? Okay. So if you are in a class that's outside, you'll be notified if your class is canceled. But we're also going to put a link on our website, so if people want to follow the air quality, they can go to a website to see how it would affect your health. All right, thank you. So could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.